All right, thank you for coming out on a cold winter night. I'd like to call this board meeting to order. First thing is the role call. Looks like all members are present. And I'd like to have you join me with the... If you please, just please stand and face the back.
....................................
All right, do we have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
And seconded.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have any questions on this agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right, now we move on to the recognition of student staff and public. Is there, is there anyone here that would like to address the school board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing nobody, we'll move to the next item here. We have government classes at school board meetings. As a requirement of our 12th grade government class, they are to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that they may attend or city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political process and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. Do we have any students that are here from our, it would be seniors at our high school, that wish to come and identify themselves? That's... That was a trick question. You don't have to come up, but we do offer that opportunity, though, if you wanted to come and say hello. All right, so are these students are asked to stay and watch the proceedings for one hour. So after 60 minutes and 30 seconds, you can get up and have your agenda signed, or take a picture, or some, something to identify that you actually were here when you report back to your teacher when school is back in session. Thank you for coming. All right, now we move on to the Part A agenda. Do this with a consent? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move approval of Part A.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions on Part A? All right, move to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. We move to Roman numeral number six, Part B. The first thing on the Part B agenda is the easement between Hub Properties Trust and Independent School District 271. Let's see, we have Rod. I'm sorry, we have a motion?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 and 124 month easement between Hub Property Trust, the landlord, and ISD 271 tenant, the easement is effective from the first day of September 2014 to the last day of December 2024.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Do we have any background information?
Sure.
When a school district sold Lincoln High School, they retained the stadium, the ownership of the stadium. However, they turned over the parking to the new owners of the property. In return for that, the school district received an easement to use the parking for stadium use. Over the years, it's been extended, and this is another extension of that parking easement. The easement is being approved, is being requested because we have a new lease with the landowners. So this thing will, this easement will run concurrently with the new lease that's been enacted with the property owners.
Okay, thank you Superintendent. David, you had a question?
No, that's all I was gonna point out, was this is the parking easement that goes with the stadium that's tied into our new lease extension over there.
Yes. All right. Now, the second one on Part B is the American Indian Educational Transmittal of Resolution. Do we have a resolution?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Oliva.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the resolution of concurrence by the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee for the 2013-2014 school year.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All right, in front of us tonight, we have Heidi Hacker. Heidi, why don't you take a moment to introduce the rest of the folks that are with you?
Thank you. My name is Heidi Hacker, and I am the Indian Education Coordinator for the district. Hopefully, this is better?
There you go.
And seated next to me is Anita Eckert. She is a parent in our district, and she is also the chair for our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Next, we have Lisa Benjamin, who is our program support extraordinaire for Indian Education. And we have another parent and committee member, Heather Deutschlander, and her daughter, Ally White, who is also a student at Jefferson High School. Pam, you want to wave from the background there? Pam's also a parent committee member. She's been our parent committee member for many, many years. And they're here tonight, as you have, in front of you is a transmittal resolution. And what they have to decide every year and vote on is whether or not the school district is meeting the needs of our American Indian students. And this year, they concurred that they are. And I think with that, I'll hand that over to Anita, and she can share with you some of the deciding factors, or some of the things that the committee decided or considered for their decision.
Hi. We had, two years ago, we non-concur because the numbers that we saw for the math was very low. And so, we've done some research, and we had Dave Heistad come out and give us a presentation on how they got to those numbers. And we've been monitoring those for a year now, and the numbers are going up. So that's why we decided that they are meeting our needs. And it was also, was it how they're doing our numbers now too is differently before...
The ethnic coding.
Yeah, the ethnic coding. We were having a lot of kids coming into the district and then out of the district, and we were getting those numbers from the testing, too, and those weren't giving our, an accurate result of the kids that were here permanently throughout their school years, so.
Got a shy group tonight. It's all right, it's a cold evening. Thank you very much for coming. We have questions, yeah?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and Heidi, the 2013-2014 Parent Committee Resolution, is that a standard, like, resolution template that's used?
Yes.
That's been used in the past?
It has been used in the past.
With wheresses and so forth, I think.
Right, it's been provided by the state, and we, we just added, we decided that nothing needed to be changed on it, and we just filled in the blanks.
Pretty, it's pretty inclusive and does address all of the concerns and issues. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Corman.
Well, thanks for coming here tonight. It's really nice to see you again. I had the opportunity to meet some of you probably about a year, little over a year ago. And I remember back then, we were, or you were discussing efforts for parent engagement, and there were conversations about addressing the needs of the Indian American community and the students. And I just kind of wanted to ask you what, what happened? How, how has the process been ever since? And, and what's happening now? How is the group?
I think we have a pretty strong parent committee. We have, we've had the same, pretty much the same membership for the last couple of years. And they're very involved with, with having other people come to speak at our meetings, to other administration, which has been very beneficial, I think, to understanding the process and, and what's happening in the district for our kids. In terms of our programming for parent engagement, we, we still have ongoing programs where we invite families to come to participate in the event. We had one in December, we had a book distribution, and we had 63 parents and children come to that. And we have different events that happen almost monthly, and we've been having pretty good showings for that.
Director Oliva, yeah?
Were there things that you noticed that the district did that we should continue doing more of? What do you attribute some of the success, some of the successes to?
I can, sorry, I can answer. I have, my daughter goes to Jefferson High School, and I have a son that goes to Oak Grove. He did previously go to Olson. And I've noticed just on the middle school level, compared to when he was in elementary school, the teachers are very, very involved, and the communication has improved. I will get emails if there's missing assignments. And besides, just depending on that school view, there is more personal contact, I believe, with the teachers, and they're a lot more making themselves available for, like, they have the lunches, they can go before or after school, so I feel like that's one of the good things.
Yes, Director Steiglau.
I just wanna, as someone that's been involved in a parent advisory since, I think, 1997, I just wanna thank you all, because I know it's important work, and thank you for giving your time to serve on it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so very much for coming out. We appreciate you raving the weather tonight. We do need to take a vote on this. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next one on the Part B is the school calendar. Do we have a motion here? Yes, Director Bennett.
Now, be it resolved that the School Board of Bennett Bennett School District 271 approves a calendar for the 2014-2015 school year.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Burks, from Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board. In your packet, you do have a copy of the recommended calendar for the 2014-2015 school year. We want you to know this calendar does meet or exceed all state and local requirements. And actually, the corresponding dates for the calendar match the rolled-up dates for this year. So effectively, there's really no change, other than the roll-up of dates from the current calendar we're on this year, as to the proposed calendar that's in front of you. So at this time, administration is recommending approval of the 2014-2015 calendar.
Director Swan.
I don't know how technical we want to be with, with the calendar like that. I seem to recall that every once in a while, they would put in there the number of student contact days, the number of days, and so forth. And in light of the weather, cold weather scenarios that some districts are facing, you know, how does that play into the workshops, the different days, staff development days and so forth?
Great, great question. We'll actually talk about that, that was added to the work session later. But we, in this calendar that you're looking at, is 172 student instructional days. The state requires 165. So we are in excess of the instructional days on this calendar.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, well, this looks pretty straightforward. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Director Harris, thank you. All right. Now we get to the board member reports. This is an opportunity just to discuss any of the goings-on that each board member has had between the last meeting and this one. If anyone has anything, feel free to raise their hand. Director Oliva.
I was able to attend the BAA banquet, where our superintendent was honored with an award. Maybe he will talk about that a little bit in his report. I went as a coach, though, not as a board member, so that was fun.
All right, I have a few, if I don't want to step on anyone's... Yes, Director Steiglau.
I, last week, I attended with many of us here, Phase One and Phase Two of our board training, and then we also had the opportunity to attend the leadership conference. And it was really nice to be there when they recognized our former school board member. And our superintendent was also there for the luncheon, so it was very nice to be part of that one. Bloomington got some attention, thanks to Director Bush.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one thing, and also, my special ed community advisory committee was canceled because of weather and attendance issues.
Okay. Director Swan.
Yeah, I don't know how exactly how to present this, but I was, I was present Saturday afternoon at kind of a historic event in Bloomington, where the Bloomington Kennedy Hockey Team beat the Bloomington Jefferson Hockey Team. And that doesn't happen very often, but it, it has to be noteworthy at a, on a public record somewhere that, that that was, that was accomplished. But it's always good to go to the extracurricular activities and see all the parents and people involved, and we have so many of those. We're blessed in Bloomington, they have so many different concerts, programs, and other things to attend, so that's just all part of being on the board.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Okay, I'll, I'll run through my list and try and make this quick. I was privileged to be sworn into the 917 Board. That was last Thursday, I believe it was. Also attended the MSBA Leadership Conference, and Director Steiglau, you're right, it was fun to see Arlene Bush earn an achievement award. They named a, an award that's almost impossible to, to earn. It was anyone who earns 1,000 points or more. I believe Arlene had 1,287 and a half. So that was fun to see that. Also, Senator Franken visited Westwood Elementary and, and spoke about his initiatives concerning mental health. That was very interesting to listen to. Had an opportunity to serve a spaghetti dinner, to kick off the read-a-thon at Normandale Hills Elementary. I dragged my whole family out there, and it was a lot of fun. So that's what, that's what I've been up to lately.
You know, I should probably also mention, last week, I was able to attend Valley View Middle, the Twins Caravan stopped by with, it was Joe Mauer, Floramon, and Lasco were all there, and it was for students who had either As and Bs in all their classes and no office discipline referrals. And so, it was a special event that they put on for those students who were modeling the behavior that we're expecting out of all of our students, and so that was a special event also.
Very nice. All right, that ends the board member reports. We move to the superintendent report.
Administration requests a motion to establish closed session of the school board for the purpose of negotiations discussion for Monday, February 10th at 6:00 P.M. So could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Monday, the 10th, at 6:00 P.M. It would be a closed session. We're all writing notes down here.
One more thing?
Yes.
As Board Member Oliva pointed out, I did receive an award at the annual BAA Awards banquet. I'd like to say something. Bloomington has a long tradition of excellence in education. When it comes to student achievement, what takes place, research shows that what takes place outside of school is just as important as what takes place inside of school. So I want to take this opportunity to thank the BAA for providing such great out-of-school time opportunities for all our children. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. What, what, just out of curiosity, what was the award that you received?
It was a, it was award for service and teamwork with the BAA.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Do we have anything else that we'd like to chat about? Okay, well, seeing nothing else, we'll call this board meeting adjourned. If anyone has to visit the little boys' or girls' room, we'll give you a couple, two, three minutes, and then we'll move right into the study session. Study session, the first thing on our agenda for this evening is the presentation, presentation by Assistant Superintendent Chris Lennox about the World's Best Workforce.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'd like to start off, please. Thank you. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give the board background information on the World's Best Workforce Plan and the Integration Plan. Board action, no action is needed tonight. Tonight is to set the stage for the board for the upcoming February 10th meeting. The new law, there is two new laws that were enacted by the 2013 legislature, and that requires all school boards to adopt the World's Best Workforce Plan and a new integration plan. The Minnesota Department of Education is charged with overseeing the implementation of both plans. And they've come with initiatives related to these laws, and the first initiative is they would like to see one plan. That means the World's Best Workforce Plan has incorporated Intuit Integration Plan. And Chris is gonna go into, Assistant Superintendent Lennox is gonna go into deeper detail on this. They also would like to see the blurring of lines between secondary and post-secondary education. This is our Bloomington Public Schools mission statement. It's up there on the kiosk there. This is the one-page format up on the screen, and this was approved by the school board in 2006. In 2011, it was enhanced with the Pathways to Graduation Concept Paper. And that's what we've been following, and from this, this infographic was developed in 2012, and that's been displayed, that's being displayed throughout the district. And that is our vision, our framework of what we do. We take children all the way through graduation. And this is the framework that's gonna help set the stage, and we're gonna use as a foundation for building our World's Best Workforce Plan and our Integration Plan. This concept here of building pathways for graduation for each of our students. Now, this is gonna take a significant team effort, and it's strategically important that we do it right. So role clarity is key in this team effort. So role clarity is key in this team effort. And the members of the team are the board members and administration. And the board has a governance role, administration has a management role. When I reference the one-plan concept where we talk about the Integration Plan incorporated into World's Best Workforce Plan, the board's role is to give administration guidance, and they need to approve the plan. Administration's role is to develop and recommend the plan to the board. When it comes to the advisory committee, as required by the law, again, the board's role in governance is to give guidance and approval of membership of the committee. Administration's role is to facilitate that committee. Another thing that's required by law is the annual report and a public hearing. The board members' governance, the board's governance role is to approve and to report post a public hearing and essentially conduct community engagement. Administration's role is to stage, is to prepare this report, stage the public hearing, and facilitate the public hearing. Lastly, goal alignment. Board's governance role is to agree upon goals for themselves and for the superintendent in relationship to this World's Best Force and Integration Plan. Administration's role is to define how we're going to achieve these goals. Does anybody have any questions about what I covered? This sets the stage for Assistant Superintendent Lennox's presentation. If not, I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Tonight, we're going to take you through information about World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration Plan. Up front, I'm going to apologize for the volume. This is a lot of information. So what I'm hoping is that we can actually have it be a little bit more conversational than presentational, because otherwise you're going to have to wake you up at the end. So hopefully I can engage you as you go through. If you have questions, I want you to ask them as we go. Try to keep you informed. But this is a lot of information, so just a heads up as we go and move through. I actually split it up on your agenda. You have two different items. Item one, World's Best Workforce. Item two, Achievement and Integration. It's all, you know, they're kind of back-to-back, and they have to be aligned. So we'll kind of pause between, take questions as we go, and then summarize some stuff and move through each piece of this. To start with, though, what I would, where I do want to begin is just to share expectations, because there's some work that, as a board, we'd ask you'd do in terms of your engagement, and that's really these bullet points. As we go through this work, we're going to need you to adopt a resolution that aligns with the World's Best Workforce legislation. Also going to need you to adopt a resolution for the Achievement and Integration legislation. There will be a resolution to re-author the Pathways to Graduation work that we've done. Specifically, as Superintendent Fujitaki mentioned, that's our strategic plan and ties back to the infographic. So we want that to align closely, and you see that it does, with the World's Best Workforce as we move that forward. We're looking, then, for a resolution to update and align our district's success measures. There's some pretty prescriptive expectations in both World's Best Workforce and the Integration Plan in terms of what we will measure. Obviously, we want to make sure that the board understands that and our success measures align with that. And then finally, the last thing, it's on your agenda as well, but to schedule school board retreats to make sure you're covering this information as well as additional information when you go through that. So with that, I'll jump in to the World's Best Workforce. And there are really five key components to this legislation. The first is that all students are to be kindergarten-ready. You've heard that in Bloomington for a lot of years, but now at a state level, they're saying, "We're looking for all students to be kindergarten-ready." Second, have all third graders reading at grade level. All students reading by third grade, reading at grade level. That's really the concept. The third component, have all students graduate from high school on time. Number four, to have all students attain college and career readiness by graduation. And fifth is to close the achievement gap for race, poverty, and special education. So those are the five things that World's Best Workforce really is striving for. They're asking schools and school districts to achieve those five things. I'm going to tie this in a moment back to our pathways, but one of the questions that came up as we were putting this together and sharing information is, "Talk to me about all students." Really, all students? This sounds a little bit, you know, like some of the legislation. Well, the truth is, obviously, we want to make sure we're meeting the needs of every one of our kids. Are they going to be all at the same place, all at the same time? Nope. So our job, as we go through this legislation and actually put it in play, is going to be take the kid where they are and make sure we have enrichment or interventions as appropriate for that student to stay on pathway. So if you think about what we've done in Bloomington for our strategic plan, we're saying every child should be moving through our system along a trajectory, a pathway, to get them to whatever they want to be when they grow up. That's going to start being a fundamental question. What do you want to be? And how do we help you achieve that? Not every student is headed for that same career or college. Some may be going to technical school, into the military. What's our role, then, in helping and support them as they move through that? And if they don't seem to be on path, what are we doing to intervene to make sure we lift them up? And for those that are outperforming, what are we doing to enrich and extend their learning as they move through? That's going to look and feel different than all kids at the same time, at the same place. I mean, that, it's really fundamentally changing World's Best Workforce about tracking kids as they go through, shouldn't say tracking. The point is, we wouldn't track them. We're going to allow some flexibility. Rick?
So if I'm understanding, it seemed like with no child left behind, it's a little bit more punitive.
Correct.
Does it seem like this is a little bit more flexible, where they say, "Okay, so if the kid moved into your district two days before they took the test, you can't quite expect them to be at..."
Right. And there will be measures that will be in place as we go along. One of the things that feels fundamentally different for me about this is it isn't simply proficiency-based, where every child will earn, you know, if you think about it, if every kid wasn't at college readiness or headed for Open College or, you know, Carlson School of Business, then they weren't effectively on track. Not true under this plan. What they're really looking for is making sure we're assisting students to get to whatever career that may be. Some of them won't be headed for four-year colleges, and that's appropriate for the career they want and for where they're headed.
The other thing that caught my eye on this was closing the achievement gap, let's see here, more privileged peers as well as students receiving special education services and those that are not. So closing the gap between the kids in special ed versus kids that are not in special ed, is that how I'm reading it?
Correct. So the, what's, as we go through this, it's race, ethnicity, special education, and poverty, free and reduced lunch stats. So closing the gap between the students in each of those subgroups compared to the whole.
Yeah, I guess my question is, you know, reading this, it seems like we're saying, "Okay, students who maybe have severe autism," we're trying to close the achievement gap between them and the students that are not receiving those services. Is that, am I...
Understood what you're saying.
I can't be reading that correctly.
Yeah. We're, and the measures, when we get into the measures, you know, Dr. Heist will help us put our success measures so we can show how that can effectively be measured, so that you're not comparing apples and oranges, if you will. Yep. Good questions. Yeah, Jim?
Chris, so then as I, we look at the first five, wouldn't those be kind of overall goals that we would want to have as a district? And then maybe...
Thanks for the transition.
Use those for...
So if you look at our charts on the wall at the infographic here, you'll notice that the second one is ready for kindergarten. So we already have in our district strategic plan that we would have all students ready for kindergarten. The next icon, our third in, reading by third grade. We want all students reading by third grade. If you go to the far right, obviously graduation and college and career readiness. We have that, you know, visualized as one, but then across all of that to close the achievement gap as students make their way through our system. So yes, we believe it's already there. The other thing I would tell you, and certainly Superintendent, jump in if you have comments here, but in no way do I believe this was happenstance. Bloomington has been asked for more than the last year to be engaged at MDE, at the state legislature, about some of the work that's been happening here. People have taken note, and as this legislation was written and as testimony was given, I think it was written in or similar aspects were written into what was happening here. I can tell you in the last, probably under a week, started last week, but less than seven days, we've been called out by two of the different assistant commissioners. Elliot Brugeman at the integration meeting actually had our infographic, asked Eric Melby to speak about some of what was happening. And Steve Dibb, when they had the latest Minnesota Curriculum Leaders Meeting, presented World's Best Workforce and referenced Bloomington and some of the work happening here. So we're certainly out in front with what you're doing as a board, the strategic plan. By no means is it done. We have plenty of work to do. Our kids have plenty of room for growth, but we're really being looked to as leaders in this area and the work we're doing to tie all the pieces together.
Do we have the data on where our students are now as regards to these goals? And how many of our kids, percentage rates are, ready for kindergarten and so forth?
I don't have it with me tonight, but Dr. Heist, Dave Heist has been. And so our success measures in the past, success measures, a lot of the academic goals or measurements were in that particular area. That's part of, if you go back to the original bullet points, we're going to go back and look at those success measures, make sure they tie to, back to these, and then we can use that longitudinal data of where we are, where are we going. The other thing that we think will help us to do is to measure the effectiveness of what we're doing. If we have an intervention, is it working? The learning supports work, as we know. Sometimes it isn't just academics that get in the way. Sometimes the students, you know, it's other issues, mental health factors. We're going to have to address some of those to make sure students are showing up in the classroom ready to learn. So as we go through, we'll look at those interventions, we'll measure their effectiveness to make sure we're keeping kids on pathway, successful to whatever career, whatever they want to do when they grow up. Good question. Okay, I'll keep pushing through. So expectations of, you know, the board, one of the things I want to do as we go through this is just say, "What should your takeaways be?" I'm going to need to know this at a much deeper level. Eric Melby is going to need to know this at a much deeper level. Deena, others, will have to have all the detail. What do I want you to know? These five expectations. If you can walk away and tie them back to what we're doing on our pathways to graduation, that would be important. If somebody asks you, "What's this World's Best Workforce all about? Ready for kindergarten, reading at third grade, graduating, college and career ready, and closing the achievement gap?" It's all on your picture. You know, make sure that if you know that, you can, if you could articulate that much, it's a really good start to explain to the community what we're really getting after here with this legislation. So as far as success measures and how we're measuring our success as we go through, written into the legislation, here are some things that will be expected. The National Assessment of Educational Progress, NATE testing, you may or may not know a lot about this. It's usually coming down from a state level. They select certain schools and say you will participate, and it's a way that they can compare schools and school districts really across the nation. So that's a piece of it that they'll, the state will be looking at. Obviously, we'll be looking at the reduction of the achievement gap by student group, specific performance on the MCAs, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, reading, math, writing, et cetera. And the college and career readiness stats, and I cite that statute there, not because I want you to go read it, but because they're actually looking at what assessments they determine will show evidence of that. ACT has been mentioned, work keys has been mentioned, ASVAB has been mentioned. So there are different assessments at that post-secondary level that students would take, that they will be looking to compare and contrast to say, "Are kids college and career ready?" And they'll use different assessments to determine that. And then other locally utilized assessments and measures, we could come up with something that we feel in Bloomington gives evidence of that, and then we build that into our plan. The school board's role. Well, one of the things we're going to need you to do is to adopt the plan as we go forward. You remember, don't have to write the plan. I don't expect you to know this stuff inside and out. The administrative team will do that. We will, we will make sure that what we put in there complies with the legislation and has the strategies that we will bring to you. What you should do is, you know, expect us to have that, explain it to you, make sense, and go ahead, then you would adopt that plan moving forward. It has to include locally-developed assessment and achievement benchmarks, and that's what we said. We've already established those in our Pathways to Graduation milestones. We will have a lot of that, you know, laid out then as we move forward to assure that our kids are ready for kindergarten, reading at third grade, graduating, et cetera. The other piece in this is, there's an expectation that we evaluate how each student is doing as they move forward. What I didn't get into in much detail, because it's actually another piece of legislation, but currently every ninth grader is required to have an individual college and career plan. So at eighth grade, we do some work where students take the MCIS assessments. We have kind of career readiness information, what do they want to be, et cetera. And we have a group of our counselors working on this acronym PATHWAC right now, but they are Pathways to Graduation Counselor Group, looking at what would this look like and how will we track students as they move through our system? Making sure they're making appropriate course choices, that they're being successful, that they're getting the grades they need, et cetera. This needs to be flushed out. That's a lot of work. Because as soon as you make that a reality at ninth grade, the question is, "What about an eighth grader? Well, then what about a sixth grader? What about, what about?" And that will be something, as we look at this, it's nothing we're going to be able to say is going to be done immediately, but over time is going to be something that we will have to look at. How are we going to accomplish that and support our students as they move through the system?
Excuse me, Chris?
Yep.
Just real quick, do you know about how much time you're anticipating for that to take shape?
For the, those plans?
Yeah.
At this point, I can't, I can't say for sure. At the high school level, we're going to have to get that going in short order and make sure that that's flushed out. As that expands, that would have to be part of our, probably part of the plan itself, the World's Best Workforce Plan, multi-year kind of structure to be able to do that.
All right, thanks.
So in addition, what else has to be continued in the, in the plan? Evidence-based strategies in curriculum, instruction, and achievement. And we have to make sure that we include an annual budget as part of that plan as well. So as a board, you'll always see, "Here are the activities that we're intending to do, and here's a budget that would align with that work moving forward." So that all has to be written in when we deliver that plan for your review and approval. In addition, we need an advisory committee. So the school board has to establish this committee. You almost have to think about this as a supercommittee, because it's supposed to be representative of all groups. And in the next slide, I'll show that, some potential of how we think that might happen. But it has to engage the community in all phases, phases of curriculum and instruction. We already have a committee, the District Curriculum Advisory Committee, is engaged in some of that work already, so very similar. There needs to be a connection there. The committee is expected to reflect the diversity of the district and its school sites, so we're going to have to make membership selections based on that. And of course, would make recommendations back to the school board in terms of meeting those five key elements and the academic standards and goals that are tied back to pathways to graduation or district strategic plan. So what might a committee look like? Well, here's an idea. As we started pulling some of this together, we really took some of the existing committees... As we started pulling some of this together, we really took some of the existing committees and the departments that they're already working in or with. So on the far left, myself and Tim Anderson, actually the Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction, leads the District Curriculum Advisory Committee. So there's a natural connection to make sure that that committee is connected back to your World's Best Workforce Super Committee. In Community Services, Tom Holton already has committees, and we'd want to make sure there's communication moving back and forth there. Eric Melby with Community Collaboration, District Diversity Council, American Indian Parent Advisory Council, who were here this evening, Special Education Advisory Committee. You can see that there's quite a few committees out there that we're going to need to make sure that the work they're doing aligns with the world's best workforce and that we're not operating in cylinders of excellence, as we've called them in the past. We need more alignment, and this committee really is intended to create that structure and alignment. That said, it's going to be a rather sizable group, because it needs to be representative and focused on the work of the district. So I think there was some question about how big do we think that committee is going to be? Probably at least a dozen members or larger, 15, 20, even by the time we get it established and feel like it's representative and focused. So Jim?
And then with the selection of representatives from a variety of these things, does the board have to approve this advisory committee?
It is an advisory committee to the board. So it's really your committee. We'll facilitate it, we will, you know, do the work, but it should come back to you, and you should be asking the critical questions. Are we getting done what you said you were going to get done in the world's best workforce? And a conversation, if you will, back and forth between the committee and the board.
But we don't necessarily approve the recommendation or the recommended participants of the committees.
You don't have to get on the phone and start calling your friends and figure this out. We will make sure that we will bring you recommendations, but at the end of the day, you will approve and say, yep, these are the folks that will work on our committee. Tom?
Yeah, under words, the principal and staff reps, is that where you would include teachers?
Yep. Yeah, so principal, staff, you'll see as we go through that, parents, board reps will want representation from the board as we go through that. And so what we'll want to do is if we, to the best we can, make sure that if someone can wear even a couple hats, that sometimes makes sense, where they, where they'll have knowledge of a couple of the different roles as well.
Yeah, Chris, just a quick question. Frequency of meetings, the place the meeting is held, and the time of day or night?
Yep.
Is that, are you wanting that to be decided by this committee or?
It's to be determined as we put this together. What we don't want it to be is in conflict with any of the other existing committees. So I don't want it on the same night or location or to, you know, or that overlaps with the district curriculum committee or the special ed advisory committee or, so we'll have to establish that. If we're going to include parents or others, you know, lots of times that means it's probably an afternoon-evening type meeting for a committee to make sure parents can access. Otherwise, we may limit, we may end up limiting our ability to meet with them. And I think that's what many of those other committees already.
Yeah, I can see it just logistically being a little dicey if you have 12 or 15 people in there and.
No question about it.
A committee.
Yep, you're right.
Thanks.
Okay, moving forward, then reporting responsibilities. We will be responsible as a district to report on the world's best workforce. One of the things we have to do is publish an annual report. In the past, we've always done that. This is a little bit different, because it will be focused specifically on world's best workforce and really twofold. It will be done in the fall. It will look at the results, how did we do, but also goal setting as you move forward. So it's cyclical, if you will. Here's how we did, and here are our goals moving forward. And that will happen annually. The board also needs to hold an annual public meeting to share progress on the world's best workforce goals. Periodically survey constituencies about their satisfaction on the school, our schools, and submit an electronic summary of the world's best workforce report to the Commissioner of Education. That's really not much different than what we're currently doing. So as we do this, it will tie back to the plan and world's best workforce specifically. Much of this is work that has been going on in the district to date. So again, your takeaways, school board, what is it that we're going to be looking for? We're going to be looking for you to adopt the world's best workforce plan. We will deliver that. Administration will bring that to you and share that. We will need you to establish the advisory committee. Again, we'll bring some selections for people we think would best fit that committee, but you ultimately will establish that. Approve the annual report on the world's best workforce. That would be done in the fall. Host a public meeting, again, in the fall, and then approve the summary report that goes to the commissioner in the fall. Jim?
I had one question. In the past, and maybe Rick Kaufman could answer that too, about, we did a PER report or an annual report that we submitted from the district. I think there was some discussion at the MSBA sessions about that will go away and then this will take its place. Did we receive any funding for submitting an annual report like that?
No.
From the state, you know, that we?
No, we did not.
We met the goal and we submitted that report, da-da-da. So this will be in lieu of that.
Lots here, I know. So one of the questions have been asked, so what teeth are in this legislation? What happens, you know, if you don't do it? You're not making progress. Well, this slide really gets at that. Commissioner's office really has the authority in collaboration with the district, but they come in and say, okay, look, you're not making adequate progress, if you will. You're not, we're not seeing you move your world's best workforce plan forward. The commissioner has the ability to restrict or require the district to hold back 2% of its basic education revenue and target it at world's best workforce. If you recall, some years back, there used to be a 2% requirement for professional development. Got sunset, they let that go. This is really, in our mind, a revisiting of that. We may require you to hold back 2% and direct it and tell you where you're going to use this as it relates towards progress on world's best workforce. And you can see the second bullet point really says that, to provide support to improve or accelerate the work. The holdback would obviously be targeted at strategies the commissioner or her staff felt like a district should be using.
Has the state given us any hard and fast guidelines of what constitutes progress towards these goals?
Not at this point. What we do have is knowing what the measurements will be. So for example, on the MCAs, reading and math, right, we will compare that by group, by subgroup, you know, that we kind of went through. So they'll start looking at that. If our gap's getting wider, the commissioner's probably going to say, what's going on? Or if we're not, we just refuse to give any post-secondary assessments, our kids aren't going to take the ACT, we're not interested in work keys, nope, none of that, then she might be knocking on her door saying, timeout, you need to do some of these things. But I will tell you, we're not going to bring you a plan that wouldn't include.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if they said you have to make this much gain per group, per year?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yep, not at this time. We'll see where that goes. What we, everyone is trying to figure this out. To the extent that Superintendent Fujitaki and I sat at a meeting hosted by MDE, was at the Ties Building, where an unnamed superintendent would, just literally said, you know, I don't know how you can hold us to this, this ready for kindergarten, all students, we're K-12, that's not my responsibility. Lots of districts not ready. Bloomington is in a really good spot, but I don't know how you can have, to say that that's not our responsibility, is a bit of an abdicate, you know, we're advocating our responsibility for all kids. And so I understand we don't have all four-year-olds, right? We don't, but we'll do everything in our power to help and prepare them to get ready when they show up at kindergarten at five. So we do have some responsibility to help prepare them. Not everybody sees it that way yet, so, yeah. Dick?
Chris, a quick question. Can you help me understand what 2% might be? What kind of number are we looking at?
2% of the basic education revenue.
I think it's about 1.5 million dollars.
That's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah. Because it's not full budget, it's just the revenue coming in, right?
So that should be enough incentive.
So as we go through this, some of the work of administration now that we will be doing, we have to provide the school, district, and site goals, benchmarks, so they'll be tied back to those milestones that you've seen. And that was one of the things that, again, we would be bringing. We want to make sure that we're aligning and update the milestones and success measures so that they make sense as we're measuring them. We don't want to measure things that really aren't going to give us the bang for the buck or aren't aligned. So some of this, we'll be setting some things aside if it doesn't make sense. In fact, I know one of the committees right now, or there's a work group, looking at some of assessments that we're doing. Are these the right assessments? Do they make sense? Are they aligned with this plan? And as we go forward, we're going to have to make sure that everything we're doing aligns, is tightened up, and there's clear rationale for what we're doing, which means some things may have to go away, right? Because we're going to be more focused. And then we're obviously align our committees, resources, et cetera, and I think I said before, consolidating those cylinders of excellence. There's a lot of really great things going on. We have to make sure they're all tied together and working well together, that all of the gears are spinning and we're not getting anything out of sequence as we're working. So the timeline for this, in January, we're already beginning formal development and implementation of the plan and trying to communicate that to you, to others as we move forward. We'll be developing a list of who we think may make up that committee, the super committee, as we go forward. And then late spring and summer, we will review all of the expectations for recording, what will have to be reported, what measures, success measures, indicators that we're going to have to collect, and then developing the plan for implementation in the fall. That's really where we'll have to have the public meeting, articulate our plan, and then move that report to the commissioner, move that forward for our goals for the 14, 15 school year. By October, we have to make sure that we are submitting that plan to the commissioner's office, so we're going to have to have the plan written, our progress to date, so a little bit what Tom said, how are we currently doing, all of that, here's where we are, and then articulate the goals for the upcoming school year. And then make sure that we hold our public meeting, and I will say this again, but that public meeting has to, on the same agenda, address our achievement and integration plan as well. So when we hold that public meeting in the fall, both plans have to be articulated and presented at the same meeting. So as we get into the integration stuff, you can hear me bring that back, but they've really aligned world's best workforce and as a subset, integration. To close the gap of integration, that's, you should be using your integration plan to do just that, and they have to be aligned. So we'll articulate all that, both plans, at the same time. Next call. Questions? Jim?
So with this wonderful program that we're going to start to develop the world's best workforce for the students here, they're probably, they're continuing on this pathways to graduation, which is already in place now to do whatever. This is, they won't be as affected as anybody coming up through the system when we introduce new measurements and different things like that.
Probably true.
Even though that's still our same plan.
Yep.
Noble, universal plan that we have for everybody, this is mainly for community engagement and letting everybody know that we're going to be doing something special to develop the world's best workforce through our school system.
Right, probably true. Yep.
So I was saying, kind of on behalf of the students here, that they're not going to have to stay in school an extra year to finish up the plan.
Me, no. I notice they're all taking notes right now, so.
Thank you.
Do you foresee any need for any radical change of what we're doing now, or are we pretty much in line so?
I don't see radical change at all. I think what will be unique is the question, the question in my mind that really will precipitate a lot of the dialogue is, is simple with the families, what do you want to be when you grow up? What were your hopes and your dreams for your child? That's different than traditionally education. These are the English standards, here's what you need to know. And I'm not saying we won't be without expectations and standards and quality content, but it changes when you're talking about the career or college readiness. It just shifts the conversation a little bit, and I think, if done well, may bring relevance. You know, why am I studying this again? And how does it fit with what I want to do? And my course selection is based on what I want to do as I make my way through. A lot of kids are going to still come through and take the same course sequence, but I think having that conversation about why you're doing it really will add some relevance to our work.
Sure. Another change will be updating and alignment of the success measures of the board. It's not going to be radical, but it will be a change to align with this world's best workforce goals and integration plan goals.
That's, and maybe this is something we need to talk at during the board retreat, but is this going to do something to our strategic plan, or does it mean that maybe we need to look at our strategic plan as things keep changing? Is it maybe time to review?
It's an interesting question. What I would tell you is that I see the pathways to graduation as an example of your strategic plan coming to life. And I think the world's best workforce aligns very closely with that plan. That's my perception. I mean, certainly open for board discussion on that, but walking in and saying, if you want to accomplish what you're saying there, educational leaders, developing in all learners the ability to thrive in a rapidly changing world, your core values, that's the picture of what that looks like, those words, in my mind. So I don't know that you have a lot of strategic planning work to do, but certainly we have of, what does it look like in practice with kids?
Because obviously the, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I do know.
Okay, it did, it does change things for the integration plan that we developed before, right? I mean, the integration plan that was presented to Minnesota Department of Education, then it's not going to be longer what they need, right? I mean, it was for two years, and it was, it was the integration plan for our district, but we didn't have this situation in front of us back then, the world's best workforce plan, and which kind of incorporates that, the integration plan. So does this mean that we need to present a new integration plan now?
Yep, that's the second part of this. It's a subset of the world's best workforce. We have to write a new integration plan.
Oh, yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Yep.
Yes, Superintendent.
I want to return to Board Member Corman's question about the need for a new strategic plan. We have shared this pathways to graduation and a strategic plan with the Minnesota Department of Education at the executive level, and they see alignment between our pathways, our strategic plan, and this world's best workforce plan. They see it as fitting together elegantly, and that's what they see as, and they want us to do this work, align it, because they think we can be a model district on how this world's best workforce plan is put together.
Yes, Director Swann.
And during the MSBA workshops that we were at. And during the MSBA workshops that we were at, Nellie and Dawn and I attended the one shift in accountability where Steve Dibb did talk with us, and he also had, um, uh, someone else on there. And one of the big aspects was, that what a lot of time was spent on was, the public engagement in this. How do we engage the public at an annual meeting? And how do we make sure that we're open, transparent? This is what we're trying to do. For, for the public to understand, you know, when we use the term world's best workforce, you know, that's almost a nice political rhetoric statement that says, oh, yeah, we have one of those. But it, it, this really brings it all together, and then to get the public engagement to buy in. I know in the past, when we've done so many town hall meetings or various things like that, it hasn't been, they haven't been that well attended. But the emphasis on this and the, the way they're suggesting is to really get the public engaged through a variety of little sessions or something, coming up to the big annual meeting.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Well, I just wanted to, um, kind of add on to what Superintendent Fujitaki was saying, um, as far as our alignment with the pathways to graduation. What I see in kind of a broader picture, the Department of Ed has had, um, two initiatives, well, they've had many, but the, two of the recent initiatives in the last years is the whole positive behavior intervention and supports, and then the response to intervention. And those were often tried, um, you know, pilot schools, join them first to gather data to see how they worked. And what I see then is them taking this and getting it put in, those, those types of things where it's about supporting the learner where they are, providing the things that they need, whether it's intervention or support. And they've rolled it into a plan that passed legislation now to do those. And since we were already doing both of those, and they were already part of our strategic plan, and, and then we're already that far down the road.
Yes, Nellie.
Yes, um, you know, this, this was just the perfect opportunity for, for all school boards to do public engagement. You know, we have this within our board goals and priorities since last year, two years ago. And, uh, we've been talking so much about that, public engagement, that's so, so needed. And it's, it's, it's so good, it's for our community. And, and this is just the, the right time to do it, it seems like. As we were in this meeting with, with this presentation from Steve Dibb, the conversation around community engagement was big. And he was even recommending that we allow the community to be part of this advisory committee. This is what we heard during that presentation, that the community needs to be part of it. And we're talking about, you know, parents and, and community residents. And as I was reading the, the bill as well, I was, I could see, the recommendation is two-thirds of the people who will be in this committee, they recommend they come from parents and community in general. So, um, my, my suggestion would be as, as a board member, when it comes to the advisory committee, because I, I see so many valuable people in this, in this recommendation that you bring, or this example of what the committee will be like. But at the same time, I see a lot of our administrators in, you know, I don't know how many people we're going to end up having in this committee, but it would be so good if we could have, you know, more parents, members of the community, students, uh, participating in, 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 you know, bringing their, their recommendations, their, their ideas. Same as the, as the Office of Educational Equity. We're talking a lot about achievement gap, we're talking about race, and, you know, all of this. This is another huge piece that needs to be included in that committee. And I understand that we're not going to tell you who goes there, like, I'm not going to tell you, you know, I want my neighbor to be there. But, you know, as you said before, you know, it is our job to establish who would be part of this committee.
So I appreciate that, those thoughts. Uh, I'd also say, you know, with your goals, that would be something at your retreat that certainly you, you would have the opportunity to talk about what that might look like and, and as a, as a board, what you'd be looking for.
I've just had, well, I had two, but you answered one.
Okay.
The, the one question I had is, do you see anything in the, um, the template for the world's best workforce that is, that has a potential to trip up the district? Those are my words, just, is there anything we're going to stub our toe on? I mean, reading through it, it looks like we're, we're in line with many of, of the items that they're requesting already, but...
I think in Bloomington, we're in pretty good shape, uh, as we move forward. Obviously, we'll want to make sure that we, uh, communicate this well. And as we put our plan together, the more alignment we can have, I guess from, from my perspective, I'm seeing alignment. Uh, I, I think as we go forward, we need to make sure everyone sees alignment. Because otherwise, if, if we're working, I wouldn't want us to start working against each other. You, you know, and unintentional consequence of, if you get too many things happening with the different groups or heading in different directions. We have to make sure we communicate and align all of this. As we move forward, um, I would suggest it is not also just about adding more things. Our, our staff cannot, they can't handle that. We can't just add more. We have to focus, align, narrow, um, and strategically abandon some of it and say, we're just not going to do that anymore, because it doesn't align with, with where we're headed. And those will be tough conversations, but I think they're the right conversations.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just, I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead, Nellie.
Are we supposed to make the public aware of this now? And in which way do we do it?
You know, you can absolutely start talking about that as we pull this together. We're going to be our first, it's a good transition as we get into the integration. Our first work will be on the writing of the integration plan. So by March fifteenth, we want to make sure that plan is, is pulled together, done, and we can, uh, be ready to submit that for current year, um, I mean, this March, I mean, for going forward. We have to write a three-year plan, and that's part of what we'll talk about. We'll talk about that as a component of world's best workforce. But there's, in, in short order, that's our focus. We won't have all the, the huge community engagement and all of that. That's really targeted for the fall, to make sure that the, the plans come together and that's all reported then. But short term, we'll focus on the integration plan and talking about how that will align or be a component of world's best workforce. I know, um, the Assistant Commissioner, Steve Dibb, has been out doing presentations across the state. So, there's going to start being more conversation about this, but it's not really widely known yet. And so we will have to do more communication this spring about what it is, why we're doing it, what are the expectations, sort of, um, crescendoing into the fall of those public meetings and presentations of the plan.
Yes, Superintendent.
Excuse me, Chair. Thank you. Thing that you asked about possible pitfalls are, you're going to hear information from other districts maybe challenging the concepts behind the world's best workforce plan. You can hear, you may hear policymakers maybe questioning some of the things and maybe proposing action be taken about this thing. We, we need to stay focused on this thing and follow through, because it aligns with all the work we've been doing with respect to pathways to graduation, our strategic plan. And we need to stay true to this thing and, and see it through, because I believe it's going to help with student achieving in this district. So regardless of what anyone says, what other districts do or don't do, we need to stay true to this plan. And where we might stub our toes, if we get distracted, start to not follow through. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
We move into the next item here?
The next item is achievement and, and integration. And I'll be a, a bit briefer on this, it's still quite a bit of information. But what I do want you to know is that the statewide integration program goals are really three main goals here. And that's to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student academic achievement. The second is to create equitable educational opportunities for all students. And the third is to reduce the academic disparities for students, race, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. So those are, that's the focus or the lens under which the achievement and integration legislation moves forward. Uh, some expectations of a district for us to write a plan, uh, and without going into a whole lot of detail about this, but we can, if you have more questions. Bloomington has its own integration plan. We really are comparing against our own schools. Our Valley View campus is considered racially isolated. Other districts have formed collaboratives, the West Metro Integration District or the East Metro Integration, and they're part of district collaboratives. We are not. We, we are an independent district working our own plan when it comes to, to integration. So that colors a little bit of the expectations in what we do as related to, when compared with a collaborative. Because we're only one district, there are many districts. And what that looks like and, and the work they do is a little bit different. So, still, one of, some of what we have to do, school board must formally adopt a three-year integration plan. You've done that before. We just have to rewrite our, uh, our plan to fit under world's best workforce to receive the revenue. It says right here, the district must align with the world's best workforce plan. And then, a plan must include practices to reduce the academic disparities between the different subgroups. And finally, that plan must include an annual budget as well. So you can see some similar, similar themes, uh, within world's best workforce and the integration plan and having those two fit together. Some additional expectations, uh, the school boards must annually hold the one public hearing for both integration and the world's best workforce. The board must provide longitudinal data that demonstrates our progress in reducing disparities in academic performance related to the subgroups. You may recall seeing Dr. Highstead here earlier this year demonstrating that and showing some of the practices we're using in Bloomington are in fact making a difference, a significant difference in some cases. Those measurements, as they tie back to our success measures, how will we know we're making it? And what are we, what are we measuring? Include longitudinal data on student growth in reading and mathematics on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. Certainly, there will be other areas measured, but those will be two that will be required. Having longitudinal data on progress towards career and college readiness. And then, we have to make sure that we're aligning again with the world's best workforce requirement to report out our local outcomes on NAEP, MCA, achievement gap, et cetera. So all of those have to be in alignment. Uh, what we will ask of the school board then is, obviously, your approval when we bring you that integration plan. Uh, we, we are already working with staff, Eric Melby, Deena, and others. We've, we, uh, attended a meeting, it was January, it was last Thursday, I forget the day, twenty-third, I think, that we were over at MDE working on that plan. But we'll be bringing that to you as we pull it all together for your approval. We'll need you to host or call a public meeting for us to be able to present the, both plans next fall and then authorize the development of the revised success measures to make sure they align with what needs to be reported, as well as the subgroups for that reporting. As we go through, remember that the commissioner, uh, will be reviewing this. And she'll go through the district's plans, both world's best workforce and integration, and, um, evaluate the plan and, and make sure it meets the expectations. If the commissioner feels we're not meeting, uh, goals, uh, she can then develop with us an improvement plan. You'll note that those goals are aligned with world's best workforce, and we talked about the two percent pullback. So if we're not making progress on our integration plan to close the gap, it's likely going to be tied back to world's best workforce. So all of those things have to work in concert, where the commissioner and legislation has the authority to step in and make some changes or help us make some changes as to what she would expect.
Chris, just a, a quick one, the, the commissioner reviews the results of each district's integration and achievement plan. Is that annually, is it quarterly? How, how many times?
Uh, we have to report annually, but the, the overall plan will be accepted for three years. So we'll go and say, this is our three-year plan. But then we check in, submit our budget, how are you doing in terms of making progress towards your goals? And remember, the, close the gap is part of the world's best workforce too. So every year, they'll be looking at it really through two lenses. Where are you at in making progress in your integration plan? But how are you doing when it comes to those measurements from world's best workforce and closing the gap as well? So kind of both and, uh, we could have the commissioner or staff come in either saying, we're doing a great job, and pat us on the back, or say, ah, you need a little bit more focus over here and, uh, point us in a direction.
If the latter is the case, and I'm not saying it would be, but how quickly would we need to respond, do you think? If they said, hey, you need a little tweaking, a little more work here, are they going to say it needs to be done in three weeks, three months?
Most of, I, I think what they'd do is they would, uh, work with us in terms of what the intervention would be. So if, if we, um, if we need to improve, uh, close the gap, I'll make it up in reading, I think the commissioner and her staff would be asking, what are your reading strategies? What are you currently doing? What might you do different? And asking us to identify, work with our staff, and there's to, to identify. If we simply washed our hands, say, we think reading's fine, we're, we're not going to do anything, she's not going to accept that and say, no, we, we need to see some evidence that you are putting interventions in place to address this particular measure.
All right. Yeah, Dawn, sorry.
On that same line, I, I think I have this, but I want to make sure this is clear. So if they see you, say you need some improvement, it could only be, instead of reading, it could be reading for one subgroup.
Could be.
And, and then they could say, you need to improve the reading in this subgroup. What are you going to do to put resources towards that subgroup?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, just a quick follow-up. So it'll be basically the same groupings, categories of students that we have now?
Yep.
Eight categories?
Yep.
Of, of all of those subgroups. So that won't change, it's just how we address some of the solutions.
Yep, exactly. So our timeline, we're currently working diligently right now, it's January, to, um, meet with MDE to find out what the goals have to be, what will be acceptable as we rewrite our plan. And we will be bringing that back to you then, as a board to review, and needs to be approved by you and then submitted to MDE, to the commissioner, coming up in, in March. In fact, March fifteenth is the deadline for, for that, that we have to submit it to the Minnesota Department of Education. So, um, I'm going to ask questions as we go through, but any summary questions with integration or the work to be done there?
So March fifteenth, we have to have a new three-year district integration plan?
Correct.
But most of it's been done already, in a sense, with the other plans that...
Yeah, so these are my folders of just what I wanted to bring, there's, there's much more. But as an example, here's a template that we were looking at. Here are the goals, here's what you have to do, you must do this, you may do that. What are you currently doing? And so we'll fold some of what we have into this, but this is much more focused on academic achievement than the plans have been in the past. So, um, they're really focusing on close the gap and, and expect districts' responses to be with, um, responding to that, making sure we're doing that.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I'm, I'm a little confused about, we're going to make this thing by March fifteenth, the plan. And then in the fall, we're going to have a report, an annual report. And it's supposed to be longitudinal data. So we're going to compare it to data from before that's not really the same data as, do you know what I'm saying? It, it just seems like it's...
So, let me do this, I'm going to send this one down. I should have made copies, we can make copies.
We had a couple PDFs in our file, I don't know if...
No, you won't have that one, because we just got it. Uh, what that shows is the top line... What that shows is the top line is World's Best Workforce, I believe, and the bottom is integration, or the vice versa. But it shows work being done on both as we move forward, and it's the crescendo I'm talking about. They enacted this legislation. We're in session. And we're trying to respond to things that already happened. Really, what the assistant commissioners have said is they've adjusted that and said, by next fall, we want you to have your World's Best Workforce Plan, with your integration plan aligned, if you're an integration district. Underneath that, both of them together, report out for everybody. So current year, one of the things we need to do is rewrite our integration plan. But the World's Best Workforce Plan won't be officially approved, written, communicated until next fall. So we're doing a subcomponent of our World's Best Workforce Plan current by March, and then that will tie all back together by October of next year.
But the data that we're going to have to report with in the fall?
Yep.
Is going to be data that was not involved in this, I mean, it kind of happened in the middle of it, but...
So what we're going to have to look at is current performance of our students and say, where do, how are we currently performing? To Tom's question, how are we currently doing? And this is where we think we want to make sure that we're targeting our resources for that plan. And then by the end of the year, we'll have some data, although not much, to say, how did we do?
That's just my point.
And then we're going to roll forward. Right. So then it becomes a cyclical process of, how did you do? What are your new goals for the next year? How did you do? What are your new...
But they can't really come back and say, you're doing it all wrong in...
Not first year.
Right, okay.
Not first year. Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At the same time, what the World's Best Workforce Plan calls for, all kids ready for K, we have that data, reading by third grade, we have that information. So we'll be able to report that out this fall. And much of the work, we're already starting construction of all these things. I want to be clear, Assistant Superintendent Lennox is leading the development of the whole workforce development plan. Our special ed director, Eric Melby, is leading development, integration plan. They are collaborating on doing this together, because it, the, um, Special Ed Director Melby's plan has to be incorporated into the plan that Assistant Superintendent Lennox is developing. But Eric's plan comes first.
Right, it does. And I would also add one other person, there's a whole lot of people going to contribute to the development of this plan, but Tom Holton and community education. I mean, there's some components that they're already doing with career development that will be integral as we develop and put the plan together.
And I was just seeing like chicken and egg keep going back.
Yep. This year, that's absolutely true.
Am I right in assuming that the commissioner's office understands that they're asking all the districts to start at the same time? And there'll be this much information or this much the first year?
Yep. And that's where, two things, not, one, not every district's an integration district. So not every district has to write an integration plan. We are, so we will. And second, that's some of the pushback you're going to hear. There are some districts that are just saying, we don't like it. It's a lot of work and we don't really feel like doing it, so we're boycotting, you know? And, but, and they've given us some wiggle room, I mean, through the fall. You know, they said, start figuring out and planning. But I really do believe you'll see that ramp up by the fall and there'll be an expectation that the districts are moving in that direction. And if they don't, I don't know what the capacity is of the MDE, the commissioner and her staff, to immediately jump in and direct 2% or doing all that, you know what I mean? But for those districts not in compliance, I think they'll feel some pressure to move quicker than...
Sure. John, you have something?
I just want to clarify, just because there's a new plan does not mean that the assessments that we've been doing has to change. We can still use, my understanding is we can still use the same assessments. So we would still have the same, as Superintendent was pointing out, we'll still have that information in the fall. It's not asking us to do a whole new type of test or a whole new type of assessment.
Is there any advisory committee going to be for the integration plan or any community input or anything?
Under that, if you look, there are, I think I referenced three of theirs. There's a community collaboration committee, there's the diversity, District Diversity Committee, and the American Indian, the APAC. At least those three for sure are out and would be, we'd want to make sure have feedback as to writing that plan.
So the integration plan was, in the past, was developed by the Office of Educational Equity, right? Am I right?
Yep.
So does this mean now that it's not going to be Office of Educational Equity anymore? Not just the office, but?
Expanded.
It's more?
Yeah, yeah. In fact, Deena, Eric and I have met several times, you know, looking at, what is this going to mean? How do we pull it together? And Dave Heistead as well, with the data, you know? Pulling him in and saying, how are we going to measure this? What does it look like? Here are the expectations. What I hope you will see, again, I'm going to call them those cylinders of excellence. I think there have been lots of independent, great things happening. Now, what we're really doing is you're starting to see a bunch of it come together. So as we present this, you're likely going to see myself, Eric, Deena, others, all coming to you saying, it's us, it's we, it's the team. It's not just one office or somebody else. It's really a group working very closely together. And Student Support Services in that regard, if you think about it, makes a lot of sense in that as we're working with those subgroups, you know? Mr. Melby has quite a few of them under that department.
Yes, Rick. So as we were saying before, they could target a subgroup and say, you know, this group of students is not achieving as high as this other group. So they could say, you know, you have to focus resources here. What does that look like when you target a specific group? I mean, in my brain, what I'm imagining is you have, you know, an American Indian, a black kid and a white kid all next to each other. If whichever one happens to be the color of the day, that isn't achieving right. They pick that one out. Well, all three of them might be struggling. You take one of them to help them, because that's the group that you need to fix today.
Sure.
I mean, that's what it sounds like.
And I can't imagine that's... I can't imagine they'd do that either to us. One of the things, a good example, because it was just this evening when they came back with their vote of concurrence, would be the work we did with the American Indian group. They came last year and said, we're, our kids are struggling in math. What are you going to do about it? And so we sat down with them and our, Tim Anderson and others really worked hard in terms of putting some plans together with the group that really engaged them, made them feel like, yep, we're making a difference. And their kids are now, you know, performing better than they were. Is there room for improvement? Always room for improvement, you know, at every group, with all kids. But I think that's an example of where you focus on an area, you put resources, you do the work to watch that.
Well, and even tonight, you know, sitting here, it's like, okay, so they got better, but what about all the other kids that maybe didn't?
And that's why it's probably always an ongoing, you know, our work will never be done. But, and I hope, I haven't heard the commissioner at all or her staff articulate that this is a gotcha type of a program. They're really saying, are you focused on all kids? All kids. Not the ones that are being successful, not the ones that are just going to, but every kid. And show us. And so I think if we can demonstrate that as a district, that we have programs and services and we're supporting students, we'll be good.
Yeah, John, go ahead.
I just want to say that I think it's really important to say that it's not, it's not meant to compare. My understanding is not meant to compare student to student. It's to look at an individual student and see if they're making the progress. And so it's not, because I get that question in the community is, we don't, how are you going to make everybody level or the same? And that's not the intention.
Nope.
And so even if they're, you know, an A student, they still have room for improvement that they can also increase. So it's not just about, you know, comparing and bringing everybody to the same level. It's about making sure everybody continues to improve. Is that correct?
And is moving toward the path they've chosen or the career they've chosen. So if you recall, some of the work Dr. Heistead has done with what we've called the rainbow in terms of the pathways, but your performance and watching that, you can pick any one of those lines relative to the career and post-secondary education that you're heading to and compare yourself against that. Not against another student, not against another line. It's really that personal best, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent?
I agree with all three of you. The pathways to graduation is about creating separate pathways or individual pathways or personalized learning plans for students. As Mr. Lennox and I often talk about, if we only had one student in the district, we would maximize work to maximize that student's achievement. So regardless of ethnicity, regardless of socioeconomic status, we're going to maximize the student's achievement by applying interventions along the pathway for that student. That's our plan. And it's why we believe the integration plan fits so well into the World's Best Workforce Plan for us.
All right. Yeah.
And I don't know, Superintendent, it seems to me that they were talking about it, and as the legislature does, wherever they have a new program, they say, that's good, we'll work that. We'll change this other program to be able to fund this new program. And so I imagine some of the integration monies that were available to a lot of districts now are being channeled to the World's Best Workforce and put under the umbrella that way. Is that any kind of a... Is that any kind of a suspicion on my part?
We're still getting the revenue we received, we would have received before the law changed.
Before the law changes?
Right.
Thanks.
All right.
Suspicions are light. To wrap up then, I guess I'll end where we started, which was, there's a few things then going forward. And at your February 10th meeting, there was a suggestion that we would work to have a resolution directing administration to develop and deliver the plan, meeting all the requirements of World's Best Workforce, as well as adopting a resolution directing administration to develop and deliver a plan integrated within World's Best Workforce, but for the achievement and integration legislation. In addition, we were looking to have a resolution directing administration to re-author the pathways to graduation, to make sure that it aligns, the strategic plan aligns with World's Best Workforce. To align a resolution to update and align the success measures with World's Best Workforce and integration plans. And then finally, at that meeting, you set a date for your school board retreat and talk about some of the goals for the board, superintendent, and the work that you will do around these plans going forward.
When does the advisory committee need to be formed?
We can bring, I don't know that we'll have that on the temp, but we sure can pull that together. How far is that? Maybe we could by then, or at least bring recommendations for that.
By when?
Yep. Yeah, we could bring some, obviously, we need some of that phone calling and outreach to make sure we're getting people on the committee. But we'll start, we'll make sure we bring that to you.
Would you keep us informed during the process between now and then?
Sure. Yep, absolutely.
So we've got a lot of work ahead of us?
You have some work ahead? We all have a lot of work ahead of us, yes.
But we do have a moment to take a quick breath?
Yep.
Just a quick one. Okay, anyone have questions, comments?
Just one last question. So if someone in the community were to ask me, how would they, what's the process of getting on this committee? Or, you know, the advisory committee, who would they?
You can have them contact me. That would be fine. Absolutely. Yep, taking the lead on that. You bet.
And they would use your district email, just, and they can look you up on the website?
Correct. Yep, email, call, either way.
Okay. Great.
I'm sorry, I have one more question on that note. Back on your suggested organization of it, on the slide, a long time ago? You had the different advisory groups. So then, would it be appropriate for those of us that serve on those advisory groups or are representative to those advisory groups to say there that they're looking for representation from there?
If you have a meeting, that'd be great. You bet. Absolutely can let them know. And if nothing else, we can't over-communicate, so...
Thank you.
So if we don't have a meeting, we could send a note to the, perhaps the chair or whoever's running that meeting and see if anyone's interested. All right, great. A lot to digest.
A lot.
So number three on our agenda this evening is sort of an update on how the decision is made for severe weather days. I think that's quite appropriate, considering it's going to be seven million below tomorrow morning. Superintendent, you want to lead into that?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, on January 6th of this year, all Minnesota public schools were closed for safety reasons because of severe wind chill conditions. These closings were needed to ensure the safety of all students. The National Weather Service publishes a frostbite chart correlated with wind chill. It says at minus 19 degrees Fahrenheit, frostbite can occur within 15 minutes or less. And for children, they lose heat, body heat faster than adults, so the frostbite could occur even quicker. All right. Our district has over 8,000 students. They either walk or they ride the bus. And our studies show that a middle school student has to walk 1.25 miles. That's the maximum distance from home to school. That can take over 25 minutes. And they'll be out in the elements for 25 minutes. And in these conditions, we find it to be very risky. Now, we have other students walking from their front door to the bus stop. And we find that it could take, for some students, with longer walking distances from their home to the bus stop, could take 20, 15 to 20 minutes. Again, they're exposed to the elements. But as I stated in my message to people today, so that's the reason why we're closing schools because of these severe weather conditions. But as I stated in my message today to parents, is that we recognize that parents are getting tired of all these, well, this weather conditions and the closings of school. And I apologize for that. And so therefore, I'm going to form a task force to do several things. The first would be to determine what kind of strategies we could develop to find a different way of addressing these severe weather conditions. And some of the strategies that we're looking at would be, I'd like to have looked at, would be educating parents and students about the risk of frostbite and the effects wind chill has. The second is what the proper attire is. What kind of outerwear do you need to protect yourself? Another thing would be helping students acquire these types of outerwear. Another thing would be to provide parents with a more flexible schedule for dropping off and picking up kids and other things. So that's what I'd like the task force to do. I'm going to ask a principal to be the leader of the task force. I'd like to have district staff and parents to be members of this task force to help us. And I'd like them to deliver three things. One is a short-term plan with interventions that can be done immediately, such as educating parents and students about wind chill and the way they should dress, because it's their responsibility to do these things. We can tell them what the families and the students themselves have to dress properly and practice safety. Another thing is I'm going to ask the task force to do is look for, develop a two-hour late start plan. We've never done one before, but Mr. Lennox and I have talked about, if we have snowfall, severe snowfall, and the roads don't get plowed, we do not want to cancel school. We've canceled school enough, and maybe we might have to do a two-hour late to allow the roads to get plowed, so buses can travel and pick up the kids and bring them to school safely. And the last thing is I'd like to report from this task force on strategies that we can employ in the 14, 15 school year, where we can think things through, do it more thorough to avoid these types of school closings. It's a big order, but it needs to be done. So we're going to get started on this thing immediately. This is just for your information. So, yes.
Did I hear you correctly? You said that 8,000 of our students either walk or ride the bus?
Yes.
Wow.
That's a lot of fingers and toes. That's a lot of fingers and toes.
That's 80,000 for fingers.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Superintendent Lennox to continue the conversation.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm really here this evening because, as you know, schools across the metro area have had to close due to the extreme cold temperatures. It's really led to the question about makeup days and what, what happens with the, the calendar? And should we be adding days back into the calendar? I'm here this evening to tell you that the recommendation of administration is going to be to not add days back to our existing calendar. And I want to, I want to share some rationale for why we would make that recommendation. First, the state statute, the state only requires 165 days of instruction. In Bloomington, we have 172 student instructional days. So, our district could lose up to seven of those days and still be in compliance. In addition, though, the state couples that and also adds instructional hours. In grades one through six, that's 935 hours, and it's 1,020 for grades seven through 12. If we were to drop to the 165-day minimum, which we hope we won't, but if we did that, we would still be in compliance for elementary in days and in hours. So, both elementary would be just fine. At the secondary, we'd be in compliance in days, but out of compliance in hours. We would be short hours at the secondary level. The interesting thing is there is no penalty for being short instructional hours. So, we could try to add days back, but there's no penalty for not adding them back. In our rationale, in three of the four measures, we're still in compliance. The other thing that we talked about, when would you make up those days? So, we've, we've canceled four days effectively. Are you going to put them back at spring break? I would not recommend that. Would you put them back at the end of the school year and add four additional days then? Couple concerns I have with that. One, every major assessment that we give would have passed by that time. If you're a student at the secondary taking AP tests, done. Those were done in May. The MCAs are done, the NWA is done. So, the assessment piece isn't there. In addition, in this district this year, we're going to be under construction. A couple of our buildings before the school ends, we're building kindergarten classrooms. So, you immediately run into construction constraints and issues in June. That only leaves some of the days, conference or professional development days, within the calendar. And, and we just did not see that, that adding a day was really going to give the bang for the buck, if you will, as we move forward. We just feel that we've canceled enough school. We've disrupted our families' lives enough that, that going in and messing around with the calendar and trying to move days around would just cause them even more consternation. We don't see the need to do that, but it is up to the board. It is at the board's discretion whether you want to add days back or not add days back. So, I vetted this with some of our principals, our instructional folks. And everybody seems to be in alignment at this point that unless you're telling us to go add those additional days back, our recommendation would be not to do that unless we fall below the 165 minimum set by the state. With that, I'll turn it to board discussion. Tom?
So, the students are in compliance. What about our, our staff? Will they have to make up any days if they're in compliance with their contracts?
At this point, we're, we're okay with, with those days. Yep.
Any other conversation? Is it all right if I withhold this information from our sons until after?
You do with it what you will. I don't, they're probably at home watching you, Dad, on the TV.
We don't have cable, so they're not.
In effect, I, I will say to the board, there's really no action you have to take because the calendar's set. You only act if you're adding the days back. If you're not adding them back, there's no action.
Well, I, I for one appreciate the, the explanation. I know there's a lot of work that goes into figuring this out. I know that there are conference calls, there are phone calls, they're referencing wind chill charts. And, and I'm sure there's gnashing of teeth and wringing of hands as well. But I know that the, the students and, and staff are utmost importance. So, when you say there's 8,000 students that are, that are walking or getting a ride from mom and dad, you know, that really is a lot of fingers and toes. And so, we want to make sure we keep them safe. Yes.
And I think one of the other aspects are, a couple of them. Parents, parents, and we've all had some emails already about, you know, closing the schools and so forth like that. And it really is an operational decision. It's not a school board policy decision per se. And so, we really don't have much to do about. We're notified as the parents are notified. And so, that's, that's one point that, that has to be reminded. In reference to your two-hour late, you know, we have never really done that in the past. And, you know, you always, when you see that in the paper, you always wonder if that's really going to be effective for some of the outlined areas or not. They've obviously seemed to do it. But that's going to be interesting to have task force examine all these types of things in order to help you all come to some conclusions about what we, how we can handle it.
How does a two-hour late start affect your number of days?
Doesn't. It's counted as a day.
So, you could have 165 one-hour days and?
I think we might get some pushback on that, but.
Technically, okay. So, just because you cut it short doesn't mean that it didn't happen.
Correct.
Right, because there are some situations where a storm hits at noon and then we have to close the schools early and try to get the buses out to work on that. So, that's quite a thing. I'll mention it later.
Yeah, Don.
Now that, you made me think of another point. If it's two hours, though, late, does that mean that early bird would just be still like one hour late then? Because we still have early bird classes that are before school?
We'll work that out. I think the committee can work that out. I think our high school principals would say early bird would, would probably be canceled on that day because we'd need to get the buses or the, or the kids, trying to get them through the roads. If it isn't safe for the buses, I wouldn't want to send them, staff or students out any earlier.
That's a great conversation for the task force also.
One of the things I would, it seems that there's some consensus to not add the days. If, if asked, that would be the district's response. At this time, the district is not intending to add days. I think that would lower the level of concern for many parents. And I think our communications department would appreciate being able to, to say, we're not, unless we drop below the 165, we're not intending to adjust our calendar.
I think it'd also be helpful if the district communicates that to say, "This is how many days we have. Here's what the limit is." Because I've had that question asked me at least three times in the last two days.
We can put that language together. I'll work with our communications staff to get something out related to that.
I'm sure our inboxes will all be full with people saying, "Don't put the days back."
Especially at the end of the year.
All right. Thank you very much for that information.
Thank you.
Okay, last, last item on the agenda is listed as school board retreat. I think we've, we've listened tonight to all the information, all the, the steps that we need to take. The district as well as the school board to meet some, some hard and fast deadlines. The first one is the March 15th submission. And in order to do that, I, I would like to have a board retreat. The day that I'm looking at is Saturday, the 15th of February. And tentatively thinking 8:30 to 11:30, something like that. So.
Here.
Yeah, it'd probably be in this, this room. Now, this particular retreat, as I'm understanding the rules that we set up for televising, this falls under a non-televized event. Looking at also having a, somebody to come in and help us facilitate it, just to sort of keep it going, keep it moving. And we're, we're looking to have a couple of choices on the February 10th meeting presented to us. So, we're, we have, like I said earlier, we have a short time to take a, a quick breath, then we get back into business. So, that February 10th meeting, we'll have a couple of choices. Yeah.
Do we know what those choices are? Yes.
Teamworks International would be one, and Greg Van Dell would be another.
What was that?
Greg Van Dell. He's an independent consultant. He's a retired superintendent from Sartell about a couple of years ago, and he's now into private consulting.
If we're going to look at our choices for having somebody facilitate it, it would also be helpful, maybe you're already doing this, but it'd be helpful if we also had kind of an agenda of what we wanted to accomplish at that meeting so that we could look at which consultant could best do the, help us with the agenda.
And we have an agenda. We'll be happy to share it with you.
Oh, I just want to point out that it's going to be the presentations, and then we'll have to make a decision that night.
At the retreat?
No, at the February 10th meeting, if we're going to do it on February 15th.
So, it's, it's a Monday, and then that Saturday is the?
And both consultants say they're available on the 15th.
So, it's three hours? Can be enough time to get all this done? Because it sounds like we have a lot of work to do on that retreat. Is that what you were saying, three hours?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at 8:30 to 11:30. I'm sure it can be extended another 14, 15 minutes.
The primary focus of the retreat will be to talk about what we talked about tonight. Make sure everyone has a clear understanding, and then move on into board goals and superintendent goals. That's key because that's going to be the overarching thing that will drive the workforce plan, the integration plan. So, all the goals need to be in alignment and synchronized. That's going to be the work that morning. And we're going to need three hours to do that work. Because part of that will then fall in to the kind of teamwork and roles that the board and administration needs to have to ensure success because we need to be real clear that what's governance and what's management. For example, one thing that needs to be talked about would be the advisory committee composition. That's going to be key conversation that morning. How many board representatives are going to be on that thing? So, we may not be complete with the work we talked about on the 10th, talking about the committee being formed. It may not be totally completed on the 10th. We may need the 15th to have that, continue, complete that conversation on the composition of the advisory committee.
And then, we don't necessarily, we will try to be setting superintendent goals, board goals, and those would be the annual goals.
Correct.
Because they could be changing. I mean, even though some of them wouldn't be generic enough or whatever it is to do that. So, they would be doing that. We, would we necessarily have to? If we, if we had enough of them, would we have to finalize how many we want to have? Or could that be done at the following study session in order to?
I'm hoping we could finalize the goals at, at that session. Because if we're going to align it with the World's Best Force Integration Plan, we need to get it set. Because when we do the annual report, it should really talk about the board goals. And when we do the public hearing in the fall, it should all reference back to alignment of goals.
I mean, that would be the major objective of the retreat would, would be to establish the goal.
That'd be one of the major.
So, so that we all understand, hoping that you put your thinking caps on, write down your goals, work them over, and then look at what we've, what we've listened to tonight. And, you know, if, if you, if you have a goal that sits way out here and World's Best Workforce and the work that district is doing currently is more over here, how are those going to, how are those going to fit? How are they going to align? Doesn't mean you can't have a goal that sits out here, but take some time. Take the, the two minutes that we have to take a deep breath and, and look at those goals and see how they fit. Yeah, Don.
I just want to go back to what Director Bartolotta said as far as choosing the facilitator, where we would have their presentations that night and then have to vote. Will we have copies of their presentation ahead of the meeting so that we can look at them and just ask questions?
Yes, you will.
Okay, thank you.
Could you please provide the board with the goals that we had for last year and the year before?
Yes. Yeah, that would be, that's a great, great question, Lee. It'd be good to see those to make sure that we're not duplicating with.
And those would be the superintendent's goals because the board, I don't think, had goals.
We did have goals for priorities last year.
From prior years. Sure.
Yeah, from last year and the year before.
So, a lot of work. We do have time. We can make it happen. Any, any other thoughts? Any, any questions? Are we all okay for a Saturday? This is going to be a Saturday morning. A little deviation from what we normally do.
I'm sorry, one very other very important question is, when we determine who the facilitator is, they have to bring rolls and coffee and orange juice.
I suppose we could write that in, you know. Blueberry doughnuts. All right. That, that'll bring this particular study session to a close unless we have anything else. All right, dress warm. Have fun with your kids tomorrow. Thank you.